Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, April 3, 2018 City Commission Meeting. I call us to order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Heinz.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
And the first thing we have is an adjournment to executive session, and this is to prepare for and review negotiations on compensation or other terms and conditions of employment for city personnel to discuss the AFS CME blue collar compensation study. So we will adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn to executive.
Don't we have to have the Pledge of Allegiance first?
We just did that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm still, I'm still under.
Uh huh. I move we go to executive session.
You know, before we do that, there is a place for public announcements. It's not on our agenda. Do we have anybody to make a public announcement tonight? If not, we will. Okay. We have our motion and our second. All those in favor of moving to executive? We need a roll call, please.
Commissioner Vogt.
I guess yes.
Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Short.
Yes.
Mayor Heinz.
Yes, we will now move to executive session. Thank you.
I don't remember where my mind was going. I don't know if I'm capable of going into executive session. I don't know where I'm at.
Be sure you come back.
Yeah.
Want me to get that?
It had a lot of water in it. I wasn't up there.
So if I talk to somebody else and they're doing it, then we wouldn't have it?
Probably working okay. We just don't want to say that, so we know.
Last I heard about maybe an hour ago, it was spilled out. Not out of the woods yet.
Another storm on its way, right?
The cold fronts out in northwest Indiana, stretching back down into Illinois. That's pushing its way this way. It should be here by about 9:30, 10 o'clock.
Fun? Does that mean it's gonna get colder, too?
Yeah.
How are you, Ms. Becky?
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to scare you. Did they leave you in here all by your lonesome, did they?
Ah, I don't want to go. I don't have to go. Thank goodness.
Amen to that.
Yes, thank goodness. Weather's strange.
Isn't it, though? I was just telling Chief, we're not out of the woods yet.
No, we're not. No, we're not. Strange weather.
Did you see it? Peterson Road, you should see, see the waterfall.
I bet it's pretty.
Pretty, it's.
It's probably like Niagara Falls.
Pretty much.
That's what somebody said.
And that whole, that park down there on the other side, it's flooded out.
Wow. You don't know. You just don't know what's gonna happen. Well, hopefully it's, but they said it's supposed to hit again about 9 o'clock with high winds and.
Yeah, it's not gonna be any tornadoes.
Two inches of rain.
Tornadoic activity like this last one was.
They don't know because of the cold temperatures it's supposed to drop.
Well, from what I heard on the radio on the way up here, it's gonna be more straight line winds.
Oh, I hate that up where I'm at, 'cause it's, I just hate that. We have no trees. It's just open field from Spiker Road straight over the pond and.
Thank God you don't have to worry about trees falling on your house.
No. Nope.
So when are we gonna see the new pictures up there?
Hmm?
When are we gonna see the new pictures?
Whenever they get them done. I've sent them emails several times to get them done.
Good, how are you? I'm Bruce, chief.
Mark Romino with AT&amp;T.
Oh, good to meet you.
Just thinking, can we have heard about FirstNet?
Yes, matter of fact, we're in it, and we just switched over. We were a combination of Verizon and AT&amp;T.
Okay.
But with FirstNet, we're switching everything over.
Oh, excellent. So you've got, you've talked to Ryan or Faber, I guess?
That doesn't sound right, yeah. Danny or Robbie or?
Oh, Danny Noble.
Okay, yeah, could be.
So great, you guys have switched over.
Yeah, yeah.
It's perfect.
But we actually saved some money.
Yeah.
On the monthly.
Right, right.
Rate that we were paying in the end. I don't know that the preemption is completely yet, but.
I've been helping them just make the introductions whenever I'm the external affairs.
Okay.
For southwest Ohio, so I'll introduce them to like an emergency management coordinator or maybe the city manager I know or something like that.
Right, yeah.
Because they've been wanting to meet with folks, I just kind of let them know what's going on and kind of explain to them, hey, here's some benefits, you know, when you're ready.
Yeah.
So that's, that's great that you're already.
Yeah, it was funny, but I mean, they've been talking about this since, really since 9/11.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it just kept getting, and then I even had friends working for the state on, you know, this project or that project. I heard about it so much, whenever the word finally came out, it's, it's time to sign up.
Right.
I was ignoring stuff.
Right, 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 right.
More FirstNet, yeah.
More government stuff, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's amazing, it's funny, you know, being an employee.
Yeah.
The other question I ask you, and this is a little more offbeat, but I was just with him. My son, Walt, is a Capitol Hill police officer.
Oh, okay.
In DC.
Yeah, I know a lot of those guys.
He trades patches.
Yeah.
I didn't know if your organization did that or if you're.
Yeah, yeah. Are you in town much?
Um, no, not really.
Okay.
Not all the way up here, but I can.
I'll run down and get you one.
Well, I can mail you one in us, too.
Yeah, actually, we have, if we knew they'd be out for a while, I'd go down and show you. We got to know a lot of those guys whenever John Boehner.
Yeah.
Remember?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
When he was Speaker.
They would come in town.
Yeah, and we watched him go up through the ranks, the chairs, I think they.
All right, we are back from executive session, and now we move to the consent agenda, which is on our docket.
There are three items on the consent agenda tonight. The approval of the minutes from the March 20, 2018 Regular City Commission Meeting, a resolution reappointing a member to the Downtown District Design Review Board, and that is James Oda for a three-year term, which will expire March 1, 2021, and a resolution appointing a member to the Civil Service Commission, which is James Stein, to a three-year term expiring March 1, 2021.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. And now we move to our new business. The first is ordinance number 5-18. It's a first reading.
An emergency ordinance renumbering Chapter 55 Stormwater Management of the Pickwa Municipal Code.
Ms. Wall has a request on this.
Thank you. This ordinance, if you recall, the last three meetings, we were amending the stormwater code. This ordinance only amends the renumbering. It's not making any changes to the code itself. However, I'm going to request this be tabled until the next meeting because the renumbering is based upon another chapter that we're going to adopt. But I think we will be adding a second chapter as well. So when we come back, we'll have two additional chapters. To put it all in line, I'm going to need to renumber this probably a second time. So I'm asking to table it for now until we can get everything together.
All right, thank you.
I move we table ordinance number 5-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of tabling this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's tabled. And now we move to ordinance number 6-18. Again, this is another first reading.
An emergency ordinance adopting and implementing Chapter 55 Small Cell Facilities and Wireless Support Structures of the Municipal Code.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This ordinance, if you recall, last year, House Bill 331 was adopted by the State of Ohio, and it regarded small cell facilities legislation. And a lot of cities in Ohio challenged that in the court of law, saying it was unconstitutional. The city of Pickwa was one of those. We joined the litigation in Franklin County, and the judge in Franklin County did find House Bill 331 unconstitutional. After that ruling, the State of Ohio appealed it. But in the meantime, legislator, legislators and individuals from the industry have sat down trying to rewrite legislation, something that hopefully most people would be agreeable to. And as a result of what we've seen passed by the House, it's now at the Senate, an ordinance was drafted. However, we think a second piece needs to come with this. Again, we would put it at the next meeting, so we request this be tabled tonight.
I move we table ordinance number 6-18.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to table ordinance number 6-18. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this ordinance has been tabled. And now we move to resolution number R-47-18. This is a public hearing.
A resolution approving the renewal application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district filed by Sally K. Apple Trust and Donald E. Apple Trust for parcels N 44076917, N 44076881, and N 44076907 in the city of Pickwa.
Okay, is there anyone here that wants to speak, since this is a public hearing on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution R-47-18.
I second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-48-18.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to zoning map to change the zoning designation of 1435 Covington Avenue, parcel N 44073178, from R3 multifamily residential to be general business.
Mr. Sommer.
Thank you, good evening. This resolution comes to you at the request of the property owner. The item has been before the Planning Commission with their recommendation for approval of the zoning change. You may know this property as the, the house that's adjacent to the new Speedway location. So several of those properties, the residential properties that sit along Covington Avenue, have been rezoned from residential to business use. There is no known end user at this time. It's just simply preparing it for its future use. As you can see on the zoning map, the proposed change does meet with adjacent properties that are already zoned business. Recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, what's the narrow section of green that'll be left between these two?
It's the easement. That's the entrance into the apartment complex that sits behind off of Covington Avenue.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for resolution R-48-18, approved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-49-18.
A resolution approving an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with Local 984 and the Ohio Council 8 AFS CME blue collar.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This resolution before you tonight, the request is to pass it or approve it by an emergency. This resolution changes the compensation or the scale to the, if you look on Exhibit A, to the ordinance of the steps for electrician one and electrician two. In the collective bargaining agreement that is currently in effect, it was agreed upon and approved by this commission that the city would conduct a compensation study. That study included wages and benefits. An independent consultant was hired to conduct that study. Based upon the study coming back, the city looked at the 11 cities that were used as comparables and came up with a 6% market study. Based upon that, electrician one and electrician two fell below the 6% market, and so that's the reason for those positions to be requested as being adjusted. On Exhibit A, it also lists the journeyman line worker and journeyman line crew leader. Those were adjusted in August, but as a cleanup to the steps in the contract, they're included on this chart. As another requirement of that article in the contract, it stated that if somebody came in above market, that position would be frozen. And so on Exhibit A, the meter reader, wastewater plant operator, wastewater plant operator one and lavatory technician are being frozen for 2019. They would, already did receive their 2% increase for 2018, so we are only freezing those positions for the third year of the contract. We are requesting it be approved by emergency because the adjustment is retroactive to January 1 of 2018.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we make resolution R-49-18 a emergency resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-50-18.
A resolution authorizing lease of portions of 8620 North County Road 25A.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. As you recall, the Underground Utility Department is relocating because the Department of Energy is going to do some remediation of the dome. A lease was already approved for rental space for the Underground Department out on 25A, but after the lease was signed, additional space became available and additional space is needed for two offices. So what is asked to be approved tonight is an amendment to that lease agreement for the additional space. The indicated rental in the attachment is total. That's not addition to what, the additional space. So it would be $3,400 a month for all of the lease space.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-50-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-51-18.
A resolution authorizing the lease of portions of parcel N 44250083.
Ms. Sommer.
Thank you. The portion of this parcel has been identified as a suitable location for telecommunications utility hut for the use by NK Telco. As you may recall, the city entered into an agreement with NK Telco to lease fiber to them in January of 2017 in order to serve businesses and residents. The telecom hut is needed to support the buildout of the fiber network. The subject property, commonly known as roadside park, and this particular portion of roadside park is the former pump station that was vacated with the opening of the new water treatment plant. The existing pump station is no longer in service, nor is it of value to the water department. As a part of the lease agreement, it should be noted that NK Telco does have the authority to remove the former pump station at its expense. It is expected that they will do that in the near future. The recommendation is approval of this lease agreement. Term would be for 25 years at an amount of $1 per year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, how big is that space?
The, I don't know the space itself, Commissioner Martin, but the hut is about a 10 by 10, very similar to what's out on East Ash Street at the Water Tower there. There's a couple of telecom huts that sit there, but the, the structure itself is about a 10 by 10 structure.
Okay, so it's not really good for a whole lot.
It, it essentially would sit on the same footprint that the existing pump station does. And the area is already fenced in for the pump station, so that would remain. Any landscaping that is required for new structures would still be a requirement, and that's contained in the lease agreement as well.
And it saves us the cost of the demolition of the building, too.
My major problem with this is the fact that we are leasing land to a company basically at the same thing that we lease land to nonprofits. I have, they make money to, so to rent this to them for a dollar annually, to me seems just outrageous. Now granted, it probably rent wouldn't be that big, but they're a corporation. They should have the money to pay for it. So they should pay an amount of rent that is.
Within the market?
Yeah, market value, not a dollar a year.
I think the strategy behind that was that we will make money off of them from leasing the fiber as they produce connections and so forth in the city. So I think that was.
Okay, but they'll make, they'll make money off of that, too. So that's, that's a wash. I would like to see this reset back out to get a fair market value to make rent for it.
I think if we get a benefit from it, I don't have a problem leasing that to them for a dollar, especially with the technology, fiber on down the road. And if we can get some of that, some sort of in-kind contribution of some sort, I don't have a problem with that.
They're leasing out our fiber, not their fiber, our fiber. They're making money off of that deal, too. So for them to not pay, basically not pay rent for something, I think's wrong.
So just to, to address maybe a little bit of that, we, we do have an existing agreement with a company called CommNet that also leases our fiber. The challenge with utilization of the fiber by our existing businesses and residents is the actual buildout to the door of that, that fiber connection. So both of those companies, NK Telco and CommNet, lease a portion of the fiber ring. But in CommNet's agreement with us, we, we or the company requesting the fiber service would have to pay for the buildout to their door, which has, has not led to utilization of the fiber network. So the, the NK Telco would actually incur the cost of the buildout of that fiber infrastructure throughout the city to service our businesses and down the road, our residents as well. So in negotiating with them on the, the space for the hut, you're right, a dollar a year is not much, but we are not incurring any cost of the buildout of the network to, to the end user's door. So the, the, the cost for them is in that, in that infrastructure buildout.
So the agreement with them is the buildout and everything else for?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be user-driven, but yes, that's what their plan is, is to build out that fiber network so that it touches every door within the city. Yes, that's what they're planning.
That's a huge benefit.
And the city of Pickwa doesn't pay for that, correct?
Correct, no, we don't.
Yeah.
So, so we, we.
Good with this.
Correct, you, we did pay for the initial ring that goes around the city, but we don't pay for it to go to the end user's door. That's the expense that NK Telco is occurring. So for that investment that they're gonna make in that infrastructure and the negotiation on the lease agreement, I, I was willing anyway to, to agree to a dollar a year. So that's how we got to that.
All right, I don't have a problem with that now, knowing all that. So that's, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
No.
Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution R-51-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have any public comment this evening? If you will please come forward and state your name and your address. That would be wonderful.
My name is Denise Bruce, and I live at 206 Cleveland Street. I would like to know if you guys could give me any answer on why that the pump station is not working at Byshoney Bridge. I have about this much water in my basement. I am pumping out my basement right now. And that pump has not been on the last few times that it has rained. It's not been on. So I was wondering if you guys could give me an answer why that the pump is not being on at Byshoney Bridge? Because it says if the pump is running, the green light's on, and you can hear it running, and it's not running.
We, we just have to check on it and get back to you then. So I don't know the answer right at the moment, but we'll find out.
Well, see, when I have to go and be pumping out the basement, my water heater's still down there, so I lose hot water every time I get water in the basement.
We'll find something out.
And, you know, it, years ago, back when we had a big flood, my husband was down there, and he asked for tow, and I fell and broke my shoulder in that basement and was in water. So I'm leery of going down there in the basement now. So I would like to know why that it's not being turned on.
It should be coming on, but we'll check and find out. That was.
Yeah, because.
206 Cleveland?
206 Cleveland Street. The water's pumping out now in the alley, so I would like to know why that's not being turned on.
We'll find out.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, because that way we can check it out.
Yeah, because when they first redid it and they had it on, I didn't get no water in my basement. But when it's not been turned on, I get water in the basement.
Yeah, well, we'll get out there and check it out, so.
Because it's coming up through the sewer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Uh, no report tonight.
Okay, we will move to our commissioner's report. I will start with Commissioner Vogt.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Martin?
Uh, one thing, if you come up on a roadway that's full of water, don't drive through it. Stop, turn around, go another way. Because there's too many people that are dying in their vehicles because they think, well, I can make it through that, and they can't. So just to keep the, keep yourself safe, don't drive through the water. That's it.
Commissioner Lee?
One thing, I had a former commissioner call and ask me about the signs that are around the buildings or in the downtown area. And although he liked the signs, he was wanting to know.
and although he liked the signs, he was wanting to know if there is a possibility of more color being added to those signs. I, I like the signs, but I think they could be a little more decorative as well, is that a possibility?
No, that's the final version.
That's the final version, I'll let him know.
Anything else, Commissioner Lee?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Short?
Um, really all I have tonight is, as, even though the weather may not indicate it right now, it has, it is spring and it's going to be warm here shortly and our motorcyclists are gonna be out and about. I know Commissioner Lee rides a bike, I ride a bike. Um, just like to have the community kind of keep an eye out more so for the bikers out there, just for their safety as well as yours, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good point, very good point. Um, I have a few things, this Saturday is the opening, the Rails to Trails opening day and we will be celebrating that here in the city of Pickwa. I will be reading a proclamation up on the bike path in the cemetery, so if you want to get out and enjoy our path system that day at ten, ten o'clock in that, that morning on Saturday, we will be doing that. Um, Jim Oda will be there from the library to give us a historic tour of the cemetery and some of the historic folks that are buried there, so that if families want to come out and be part of that or if you just want to take off on your bike or walk or run on the path that day. But this is a national Rails to Trails opening day and we are celebrating that here in the city of Pickwa. Also a reminder that we are having our Code Pickwa, we will be looking at our code. We have already had some meetings for this, but the week of April sixteenth will be devoted to having our citizens come out and really giving their ideas and information about how they want our codes to be changed, so look for more information, it's on the city website, but that's a great way for your voice to be heard as you are looking at the codes here in our city. Also a reminder that Johnston Farm and the Pickwa Area Chamber of Commerce is holding a Mills Brothers concert on the nineteenth of April, Thursday night, up at Fort Pickwa Plaza. So if you have not gotten your tickets for that, I know there are some available, but another wonderful evening out in our city. And also that week, Dancing with the Pickwa Stars will be on that Saturday, the Pickwa Arts Council fundraiser that they have every year. So we have some more of our Pickwa Stars getting out to dance and for a good cause for our Arts Council here in our city. The final thing that I have is I have been working on this project for quite a long time along with some other citizens here in our community. We are, we are producing and are going to put together a Pickwa music video. And the exciting thing about this is we have local homegrown talent that has provided the actual song and that's all I will say about that right now, you will hear more about that. But this video, the idea of this is to really promote ourself as a city and all the attributes that we have to the wider Miami Valley, to the state and to the nation and the world in that matter, and also to ourselves, because you know, Pickwa's a pretty awesome place to live and we want to celebrate that. So we will be filming that video the weekend of April fourteenth and fifteenth. You will see us all over town as we are trying to film and get different parts of our community. But the final big culmination of the video, if you will, is going to be a parade scene on Main Street. And that is a y'all come event, so if you want to come out and be in our music video, that Sunday afternoon from two to four thirty, you can find information on my mayor's Facebook page, also on our city's website. Um, there, there do have to be some releases filled out for this, but we would love to have you come out and be part of the crowd scene and just celebrate the wonderful community that we have. And like I said, keep your eyes open because there's gonna be more and more information about this coming out over the next few weeks. But I am really excited about this and the group that has been working with me on it, we are very excited about bringing this to fruition and we will have a big kind of final celebration of it this summer where we will show it to the community and just celebrate the wonderful place that we live in. So if there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.